All right. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting for August 26th. I'd like to welcome everyone. We do have a very unique special order of business today, which we don't typically do, and that is a public hearing for our charter schools, our charter partners. So we will be doing a public hearing, open and closed with that, and asking for public comment on that specific item. And then we'll be moving through our day. We do also have public comment related to agenda items today, and we do have a very big day as we will be moving across the street for additional work session on the mask mandate. So with that, I will call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Wooden, before I begin, can you hear us?
Madam Clerk, I should also mention Commissioner Wooden is joining us virtually due to a medical exemption. His child has been very ill, and unfortunately, he and his spouse got ill as well, so.
That is noted and therefore will be considered part of the quorum in attendance. I will go ahead and begin, and hopefully he can hear. Commissioners Antor, Breavy.
Here.
Volkowski.
Present.
Burl.
Green.
Here.
Hennessy.
Jones.
Here.
Coleman.
LaGrand.
McLeod. Morgan. Ponstein. Skaggs. Sparks. Vice Chair Stack. Commissioners Teal. Womack. Wooden. Chair Bolter.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have 15 members present, three absent, one that I can see but cannot record his attendance. You have a quorum.
So one iffy.
I believe the computer here is on mute, so I don't think anyone in the public can hear our meeting right now.
Yes. Commissioner Wooden.
I'm here.
Good morning, Commissioner Wooden. Your presence is duly noted and very recorded now.
Thank you. Very Grand Rapids, Michigan, nursing a nasty cold.
Madam Chair, you have 16 members present, three absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to invocation today. Now I'll call Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. So I usually have a member of the clergy come in to give an invocation when it's my turn, but this time around, given the day that we're looking forward to, I felt it was important to speak about what many of us are feeling right now, how many of us are feeling right now, tension, disconnection. Earlier this week, I read a social media post by a fellow commissioner. It was a quote from playwright Tennessee Williams as he contemplated the end of his life in 1982. And it goes like this, "The world is violent and mercurial. It will have its way with you. We are saved only by love, love for each other, and the love that we pour into our art that we feel compelled to share, being a parent, being a writer, being a painter, being a friend. We live in a perpetually burning house, and what we must save from it all the time is love." And this got me thinking about the human condition, about love, about community. Of course, most of us know about the Sermon on the Mount where Jesus instructed his followers to "do unto others as you would have them do unto you." And again, the Gospels relate that Jesus said that we should love God and love your neighbor as yourself, and that this summed up all the law and the prophets. And so we see here, as we do in the parable of the good Samaritan, that one is supposed to not simply restrain oneself from doing negative action, from hurting other people, but that it is a responsibility to take positive action to bring benefits to our neighbors. And we see this moral axiom not only in Christian teachings, but in texts and traditions from throughout the globe, throughout history. I promise this won't devolve into a long history lecture. Those days are behind me. But almost every religion and philosophy has love for thy neighbor, for the community, for all humanity, at the core of its ethics. In the Islamic tradition, the prophet Muhammad stated, "As you would have people do to you, do to them. And what you dislike being done to you, don't do to other people." In Buddhism, one of the divine attitudes is metta, which is translated as loving kindness and posits that intentionally doing good for others is the path to salvation. Ancient Greek philosophers discussed Agape, and obviously had great influence on Christianity, as a higher form of love, the highest form of love, in which the individual seeks the good for all humanity. And I would say that the ethic made its way into the modern nation-state and patriotism, which was perhaps best summed up by President Kennedy when he exhorted us to, "Ask not what your country can do for you, ask what you can do for your country." So despite these differences, almost every religion, almost every belief system has its highest virtue, the need to treat everyone with kindness and to actively love and care for everyone in our community. This deeply embedded faith that we are here to do good for each other, to love each other, this is the ethic that I believe will get us through this moment and through this pandemic. I hope that whatever faith or philosophy you hold dear, that you'll join me in a moment of silence and bow your head to reflect on the role of the individual in society, on our human commonalities, and how we can live based on this ethic of brotherly love.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We are on to our special order of business today, which is a public hearing on our charter schools. I will declare this public hearing regarding our charter school bonding open. Do I have any public comment on the charter school bonding issue today? Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes.
My name's Laura Kalifi. I am actually resident of this county. I'm here, though, my address, 1563 Woodlawn Avenue Southeast, East Grand Rapids. I am here, though, on behalf of National Heritage Academies, to explain why we're requesting this public hearing, on behalf of Campus Partners One. Campus Partners One is a 501(c)(3) entity, a Michigan not-for-profit that's requesting this public hearing to issue bonds to purchase nine existing charter school facilities. I want to be clear that this transaction does not create a liability for Kent County, nor does it create any ongoing obligation for Kent County, nor is it an obligation of the charter schools. It's an obligation of Campus Partners One, the 501(c)(3) entity. Because they're seeking a national bond issuance, the IRS, in Section 147, requires that a local government entity hold a public hearing to collect public comment. I want to share that there are several benefits, that I believe, to the schools in this transaction. The schools themselves have just received the information over the past couple of weeks, and it's very important to note that bonds would not be issued without their consent or approval. School boards will be reviewing all of the information and will be ultimately making the decision. This public hearing is just to collect public comment, and it's just the first step in the process to allow the issuance of tax exempt financing. There will be significant financial benefits to many of the schools. The refinance with the tax exempt bonds would result in additional funds at the school level, which the school could use to build their fund balance, the school could use to invest in their community, in their school programs, in their students and families. So the range of that varies, and each individual school will determine whether or not that's in their best interest. But again, the reason why we're having this hearing is to collect that public approval required by our IRS code. The...I do want to ask, I know it's public comment, but if there are any questions?
Laura, we have it as an agenda item that we have to vote on, so we'll probably have to bring you back up for that.
Okay, perfect. I just wanted to give a brief introduction of why we're here, what we're asking for, to let you know that there are multiple more steps. I believe that there was public comment received from schools with a neutral statement, and that's understandable, given the fact that they are still evaluating whether or not this is in their best interest.
Thank you so much. Do we have any members of the public wishing to speak on the charter bonding issue? With that, do I have a motion to close the public hearing? Moved by Commissioner...moved by Commissioner Womack, support by Commissioner Coleman, all in favor of closing the hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Hearing is now closed. We will move on to public comment related to agenda items of the Board of Commissioners meeting today. Do I have any public comment here related to agenda items of the Board? All right, seeing none, we will move on to consent agenda. Commissioner Skaggs.
I move today's consent agenda.
Moved by Commissioner Skaggs, support by Commissioner Breavy. Questions or comments on the consent agenda? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Volkowski. Burl. Green.
Yes.
Hennessy. Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
McLeod. Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein. Skaggs. Sparks. Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Womack. Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays. The consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to item eight of our board meeting agenda, and it is resolutions. We have quite a few. As mentioned, the bonding is the first resolution, and I'll call Commissioner Stack for a motion.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move approval of Resolution 75 of today's date, which approves the issuance by the authority of bonds in the amount of $138.5 million.
Moved by Commissioner Stack, support by Commissioner...
Support.
Jones. Questions or comments on Resolution 75? Commissioner Breavy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I just wanted to disclose that my husband is a board member at Excel Charter School, one of the National Heritage Academies, and I will be voting on this. There's no financial gain for our family for this. He's just a member of the Board.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Morgan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If somebody could just bring me up to speed, you're not asking for our full faith and credit backing to this bond, because this is the first time I think I've seen this in my career. So where would they usually go to get bonding?
State treasury.
State treasury.
Yep. And Roger Swetzes is here, our bond council is here to answer some questions.
Yeah, just wondering, you know, we're pretty protective of, you know, our bonding and our bond rating. And so what I understand is we're not pledging our full faith and credit to this bond issuance.
That is correct. Thank you, Commissioners. Yes, Roger Swetzes, I'm the county's bond council, so I was asked to look at this on behalf of the county to assure just that, Commissioner, that these bonds would not pledge the full faith and credit of the county. The county would not, under any circumstance, be liable for any payment on these bonds, and they also would not be taken into account in evaluating the county's credit rating. So this really doesn't have anything to do with the county, other than that, under the Internal Revenue Code for this particular type of bond issue, the federal government requires that a hearing like this be held so that public comment can be gathered in case there would be controversy that should be taken into account by a public body before a bond like this would be issued. And if there is none, these kind of resolutions are routinely passed. You mentioned you don't see this very often. You probably have not ever seen this at Kent County, because in Michigan, this kind of thing would normally come in counties that have an active economic development corporation. So there are counties that issue these kind of bonds at the county level. Otherwise, they're usually issued at the state level. In this case, because this is a multi-state issuer being involved, there's not a state body that can hold this hearing, so we need to have a local body hold the hearing. And that's really, other than just to receive the public comment and assure that there's nothing against public policy going on here, that's really all you're being asked today.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sparks. Commissioner Wooden.
Thank you, Chair. In light of the public policy question, I did have a few follow-ups. First, that the approval process that was mentioned being a prerequisite to the issuance of the bonds, is that a requirement to have the current 501(c)(3) approve that before the issuance, or is that an expressed desire of Campus One and NHA? Are they required to do it, or is that the process that they're electing to do?
As far as this hearing, this is a required hearing by the Internal Revenue Service. So this kind of hearing happens prior to the issuance of any kind of what we call private activity bonds. They can be 501(c)(3) bonds like this, or sometimes there are bonds for low-income housing projects. There's a category of these bonds, and the code requires this hearing before any one of those bonds can be issued. If the question is kind of towards whether or not the schools have to approve the leases before this can happen, they don't need to approve the leases before this hearing occurs. They would need to approve the leases before the bonds are actually issued, and they're being issued by somebody else, so we don't really need to worry about that on our end. And if a school would decide not to approve it, they just wouldn't participate. So I don't think that that would be harmful to a school in any regard like that. If I missed your question at all, please let me know.
No, that was very helpful, and certainly, if, forgive me, I didn't catch your name, but if the gentlewoman from NHA would like to speak on that, I would love to hear it.
Laura Kalifi. Thank you, Commissioner Wooden. So you asked about Campus Partners One. It is a requirement that to issue tax exempt bonds, it be a 501(c)(3) entity, and Campus Partners One has received that determination letter from the IRS.
Thank you. And so my two follow-ups, and I think you might be a little bit better, more equipped to answer. Essentially, the savings that could be experienced to each of these schools individually are through the renegotiated lease. And since those leases have to be approved prior to the issuance of the bond, there is essentially some protections to the 501(c)(3) to ensure that the savings in the lower interest rate is borne to them, that windfall comes to them, correct?
Correct. So there are two parts that the school boards will have to review. One is the new lease agreement, and the other is a new management agreement with NHA, and the combined effect of those will result in the financial savings to the schools. The lease agreement, yes, so there is a proposed base rent lease agreement, which will be finalized after the bonds have been priced. So if the bond pricing comes in better than anticipated, which interest rates are at a historical low right now, if it comes in at lower than anticipated, then the schools could see additional savings in that proposed lease rate.
Fantastic. And even though there's no legal requirement that the savings of the refinancing be borne to the 501(c)(3), they have essentially, for lack of a better word, leverage in the negotiation of approving the lease to ensure that those savings come to them?
Right. I would say there's no legal requirement. However, Campus Partners One, as a 501(c)(3) not-for-profit entity, has a purpose to support the schools in this, and they would be fulfilling their mission and vision by helping the schools with those new lease payments.
Thank you, Laura. Are you good, Commissioner Wooden?
I have one last, and then I can hear before.
Okay, yeah.
I know we have a lot. I apologize. I saw that the current properties that are in question are all owned by an affiliated LLC through NHA. If any of those sales through to Campus Partners One ends up with a windfall to NHA and through their LLC, how is that windfall brought back? Is there any requirement that it be brought back to the schools themselves? What kind of securities are in place that if there's a windfall through the sale itself, that it goes back to the school?
Well, NHA has debt outstanding, and so NHA would be looking to refinance, basically, and pay off debt with proceeds.
Thank you. Commissioner Womack.
Just a question for legal, following up on what Commissioner Morgan asked about, about our full commitment to this bond being a little different. What are our liabilities and assurances to this bond?
Our bond council took a look at it, but I agree with his conclusion. I'll let him tell you that there is no liability to the county.
Yeah, this, thank you, Commissioner. This bond really does not involve the county in any way, other than just this public input gathering that you're doing this morning. After today, there'll be no involvement in this bond. It has no debt liability. It's not issued by, or has any other connection with the county.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. Just a comment. Many years ago now, I was one of the first families to hook up with Chandler Woods, and our kids had just an incredible education, and we still love it there. And I just hope this gives you the type of stability that you guys are looking for, and I think this is a great maneuver. I'd question why you didn't do it a few years ago, but anyhow, good luck with everything.
Commissioner Volkowski.
Thank you, Chair. Just on the top of page two, you know, again, the word approval always gives me pause in the sense of, we're just gathering public comment, but we still have to approve these. So just page two of our agenda item, the two questions are, it states, "The applicable elected representative of the governmental unit on behalf of which bonds are issued." Are we that governmental unit, or is the schools that governmental unit on behalf of which bonds are issued?
A lot of this is IRS language, so it is obviously confusing and not as clear as it could be. The bonds are ultimately being issued on behalf of this Campus Partners One entity, not on behalf of the county. But the county is the applicable local unit as described in the Internal Revenue Code, and in addition to receiving the comment this morning, the code does say specifically that the county board has to approve. So that's why the approve word is in there. You're not approving this in the sense that you would be adopting a bond resolution and approving a financing for the county. You're just approving it here in a more small a sense, that you're approving it in that there's nothing that is of public policy concern here, and so therefore, approval in this sense really just means you're giving your okay for it to move forward, as opposed to, you know, a broader approval of the specifics of the project, if that's helpful.
Thanks, Roger. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 75, Commissioners Antor. Breavy.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Burl. Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
McLeod. Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks. Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal. Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
And just in case there are any rules prohibiting not being in a seat when voting, Commissioner Antor?
I wasn't a seat.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have 18 ayes, zero nays, one abstention. The motion passes. Resolution 75 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8b of our agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Womack for a motion. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I'd like to move Resolution 8262176, Indigent Defense Appropriations from our administrator's office.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Womack, support by Commissioner Coleman. Questions or comments on Resolution 76? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 76, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LaGrand. McLeod. Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks. Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 76 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8c of our agenda, and I will call Commissioner Volkowski for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution 77 of today's date. It is the Cooperative Reimbursement Grant for fiscal year 2223. How did it become 2023? On behalf of the friend of the court.
Moved by Commissioner Volkowski, support by Commissioner Sparks. Questions or comments on Resolution 77? Please mute your phone. All right, seeing none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 77, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Burl. Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LaGrand. McLeod. Morgan. Ponstein. Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks. Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 77 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8d of the agenda, and I'll call Commissioner Breavy for a motion.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 78 of today's date, Michigan Department of Health and Human Services COVID immunization funding from the Health Department.
Moved by Commissioner Breavy.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on Resolution 78? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 78, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Volkowski.
Yes.
Burl. Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
McLeod. Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks. Vice Chair Stack.
Yes.
Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Wooden.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 78 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to 8e of our agenda, and I will again call Commissioner Breavy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 79 of today's date, fiscal year 2020, State Homeland Security Grant and Budget Amendment from the Sheriff's Department.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Breavy, support by Commissioner Womack. Questions or comments on Resolution 79? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 79, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Volkowski. Burl. Green. Hennessy. Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LaGrand. McLeod. Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks. Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have eight, 19 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 79er is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to eight F of the agenda, and I will again call on Commissioner Womack for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 80 of today's date, Amendment to Fiber Car Sharing Agreement from our Information Technology Department.
Moved by Commissioner Womack, support by Commissioner?
Support.
Breavy. Questions or comments on Resolution 80? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 80, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 80 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to eight G of our agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Morgan for a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm gonna slow this down a little bit here. I move Resolution 81, and it's a North County Campus CIP project, and it's from Fiscal Services.
Support.
Moved by Commissioner Morgan. Pause, pause, pause.
You know, when you hit 65, you just can't keep up.
Yeah, you old guys. Supported by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on Resolution 81? Commissioner Coleman.
I'd just like to comment that I'm a little concerned that the ambulance guy is slowing things down.
That's a problem. That's a real problem. Commissioner Morgan.
I just wanna make a comment. This came in like 5% over the estimate, so my hat's off to the department to come that close. I'm building a station in Cedar Springs, and I was way off.
We'll have Al do it next time for ya.
I mean, Al, I was way off. So hey, congratulations. I thought 5% is really in the ballpark.
Awesome. Any other comments, questions? I'll just say I'm really excited for the project. It was a long time coming. Commissioner Morgan tried to set that in motion.
When I was vice chair.
A while ago, yep. And I think it's a proud, proud thing for the county to be able to pay cash for, for a building, and, and so, yeah, it's good work, so. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 81, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Burl. Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
McLeod. Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Sparks. Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Clerk, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
I think I was skipped.
Well, somehow I have 19 votes. Commissioners, Commissioner Skaggs?
I probably voted for her.
Thank you. My apologies.
Roger put two votes in.
This is no reflection on the accuracy of our election and the, and the vote tallies there. Madam Chair, you have 19 members voting aye, zero nay.
Ish.
The motion passes. Resolution 81 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to eight H of our agenda, and I'll call Commissioner Sparks for a motion. Moved by Commissioner Sparks, support by Commissioner Steck. Questions or comments on the senior mileage budget amendment? Commissioner Bolkowski.
I just need to note my abstention due to conflict of interest and for levity, my continuing frustration with our friends at Microsoft Word, that they always autocorrect "millage" to "mileage." It's not, for some reason, I type the word "millage" a lot. I don't know why.
Yep.
But yes, so it's not our staff, it's those kids in Seattle.
Any other questions or comments on the senior mileage, millage fund budget amendment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 82, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Abstaining.
Burl.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
McLeod. Morgan. Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks.
Yes.
Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 18 ayes, zero nays, one abstention. The motion passes. Resolution 82 is adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are on to eight I, the last resolution, and I'll again call on Commissioner Breavy for a motion.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I move Resolution 83 of today's date, General Fund Support for Projects from the Drain Commissioners.
Moved by Commissioner Breavy, support by Commissioner Morgan. Questions or comments on this resolution? I know our drain commissioner's here. All right, seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 83, Commissioners Antor.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Bolkowski.
Yes.
Burl. Green.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Jones.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
LaGrand.
Yes.
McLeod.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Skaggs.
Yes.
Sparks. Vice Chair Steck.
Yes.
Commissioners Teal. Womack.
Yes.
Woodin.
Yes.
Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Madam Chair, you have 19 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 83 is adopted.
Great, thank you, Madam Clerk, and I appreciate how quickly you got through all of those things. They, thank you very much. We do have, obviously, an event across the street for work session on health orders. We do have public comment here today. I also need to get through reports miscellaneous as well in an effort to get over there. So I would ask if anyone has public comment related to the mask mandate health order that we, you join us across the street. Otherwise, I have public comment here today on general county matters as well, so we will take that now, if you have additional public comment. Welcome. Come on up. And if you could give us your name and address for the minutes, and you have three, three minutes for public comment. Good morning.
Name is Sydney Deans. So all I have to say is that I hope that you people will look into what I'm talking about and consider it very carefully and speedily to get it done, so these landfills can stop and cap it all with no more saturation of it, which feels a lot...
Thank you, Mr., thank you, thank you, Sidney. Appreciate it. Any other general county public comment today? Welcome, please give us your name and address. Three minutes.
My name is Rene Russo, and I will be going across the street, but it's really important to me that I be able to look you all in the eye and give you a short account of what's going on. So my name's Rene Russo, and I live in Belmont, 500 yards from the first of Wolverine's toxic dump sites that was found. And all five of us in our family are experiencing health issues that we can't prove, of course, are related to that or not. So we are trying to live as healthy as we can. We're, we're trying to live as clean and healthy in all aspects as we can. I feel like my number one job is to provide care for my family, which includes helping them make good choices with their eating and getting exercise and connecting with people. And when they go to school, eight hours a day, and then possibly another five hours at work, that they're able to really connect with people. I personally am deaf in one ear, so when I'm talking to a board, I can't even tell where the voice is coming from. And just, and I'm a teacher, so I, just to imagine, I, I used to be a teacher. So to imagine all the kids struggling right now, to actually be able to understand what people are saying. One of my teenage girls came home crying for three hours one night because we're walking around like zombies and our teachers are begging us to talk in class. This is not healthy. Healthy in my worldview is to breathe fresh air and to be able to connect with people and for people to make their own choices, and we respect people's choices about protecting themselves with face masks. But I feel like a worldview is being pushed on us. It's like a religion. So I just ask of you all to ask yourselves why we're not asking the questions and we're not getting the answers related to asking for the evidence that you're referring to when you're stating that the Health Department is making decisions based on evidence. Please share the evidence you are referring to that is supported by an individual taking liability under the pains and penalty of perjury. I want one individual, please, tell us who is willing to do this. With the signed affidavit, this, this, I would, the evidence needs to be real. We're not, we're finding all of the evidence that we're seeing is, is being censored. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Renee.
We would like to see the evidence, and we would like you guys to fight for us even harder. Otherwise, our, the America that we have is gonna be gone.
Thank you, Renee. Again, I would welcome anyone to come up for a public comment related to general county matters. Again, we do have a mask health order work session across the street where we will be asking various questions, and we also have a very substantial room for public comment there as well. And we will be taking numbers there, so it is a first come, first served across the street. Any other public comment for general county matters today? All right, seeing none, we will move on to Commissioner Reports. Do I have official reports today? Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Just want the board to know that experienced Grand Rapids as a board did meet in person on August 12th. We are very focused on the recovery from COVID as we get heads in beds for tourism, and a lot of different information was presented by a consultant. So I just wanted to just make a note that there's a lot of focus on continuing to get our tourism back up and running. And also the Parks Foundation, which I'm on the board for, Matt. And reminder, if you don't have it on your calendars, please consider supporting Something's please consider supporting Something's Grilling on September fifteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Breevy.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I have two updates. The first one comes from the Department of Public Works. We were supposed to have a work session following our board meeting today, and that has been tentatively rescheduled to, um, September seven, following our finance meeting. It'd be fantastic if, um, you all could join us. We're gonna be going through, um, some of the information for the Sustainable Business Park in a way that we're hoping to reduce what goes in the landfill and, um, reduce what can contaminate, um, our landfill for future years. So, we hope to share all that information with you and the board, um, coming up, and hopefully, um, we can get some more information to you, but plan on nine, seven, that's the Tuesday after Finance. Um, and then also on Monday, I think many of you are scheduled to go to, um, the DPW, uh, different facilities for a tour. So, hopefully, you can join us at nine AM on Monday. Let me know if you have questions regarding that. I'd be happy to give you more details if you haven't received them. And, um, my next update is from the airport. Yesterday, um, Commissioner Morgan and I met with our colleagues on the Airport Board, and we approved, um, a request to bond, and this request actually came before, um, the board last year. It was before COVID. And, um, we put the brakes on it with all that was going on in the travel industry. The numbers kind of dropped during last year. But it was, the ask was for a hundred forty-five million dollars to bond. Um, the ask has been reduced. The plan has been slightly changed and amended, and it will be, um, what the bond request is for a hundred fifteen million dollars. And we'll be seeing that coming through, um, Finance, and then it will come to the full board in September.
For Concourse A.
For Concourse A, yes. It's the Concourse A expansion. What was originally part of the plan was Concourse A expansion plus, um, a car rental facility, and then also, um, what was the third item on that?
I can't remember. I'm sixty-five years old.
So, it's just reduced to one item, and, um, oh, it was the parking, the parking ramp. So, uh, we're putting that on hold until we have, um, a, a firm commitment from our friends over in the car rental facility. So, um, it would just be Concourse A, and the numbers have really increased at the airport. I mean, travel is up. I think we were at about ninety-seven percent, um, for July of our two thousand nineteen numbers. So, it's.
Business travel still.
Yes, business travel is still, um, catching up, but we see that, it's okay. We're partners in this. Um, we see business travel, uh, picking up in the next few months, too. So, that's my update. Let me know if I can answer any additional questions for you.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. I will be really brief. Uh, this past week, along with my Commissioner colleague, Commissioner Teal, the Pension Board met. Uh, we are currently at one point one billion dollars in assets. We are a one hundred percent fully funded plan. You do not hear that much around the country. Uh, the only thing I want to point out is that, uh, with my position with MAC, I get to meet a lot of different county officials, different members who sit on pension boards. With assets like that, and we have three outstanding employees that make up two and a half people, Michelle Belkum, Tara, and Mandy, do an outstanding job, uh, for a plan our size, and I just hope that in the future, that the staff and, uh, the budgetary process will relook at, uh, you know, the positions at the Pension Board. It comes all out of the Pension Fund. It's not a liability to the General Fund, so I just want to give a shout-out to the incredible work the staff does and, uh...
Commissioner Morgan.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Just, uh, a quick report on the Dispatch Authority. Uh, I would, I'd just like to say that, uh, we've accomplished a lot of our goals, and, um, we're gonna have to, uh, as we move along, um, we're gonna have to make some policy decisions on how we want this to be governed in the future. And so, you know, I, I'm kind of a small government guy. I don't know if I want to build a whole nother bureaucracy because, um, of a whole huge authority, because it's not a consolidated dispatch. We have, uh, the Sheriff's Department and the city police department, the city that has these dispatch centers, so, um, I want to say that, uh, we're in a good position. We're gonna try and pay off some bonds early. I'm not trying to get ahead of the sheriff here, but, uh... And if you want to come up and add a comment, feel free. But anyway, uh, we're gonna have some policy decisions to make, uh, in the short term here pretty soon for the long-term governance of, uh, the dispatch.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. Just a couple of updates. First, at Network One Eighty, we are proceeding to negotiate the actual development and construction of the Pure Respite Center, as well as our Crisis Response Center. These are two projects we've been working on for a long time. They are finally coming together, so, uh, moving to, uh, to actual reality. So, pretty excited about that. Uh, KCCA, uh, Board Met, Commissioner Wooden and I were, uh, able to go through that. A, um, uh, a report on where we are and the expenditures of our eviction moratorium funds. Uh, we have a total of about thirty-five million, if I recall, Commissioner Wooden, and we've only spent about twelve million. So, we've got a long ways to go and a lot of money to spend, and so encourage any of you, if you have ways of communicating that availability, uh, to let us know. So, uh, then on senior millage, I'm sorry, senior mileage, uh, w- we have, uh, we have started the annual, uh, track. Uh, so, we've had our first few meetings on allocation, looking at new applications for new projects. Uh, excited about some of those, and, uh, and then we'll get into the full, uh, evaluation process in October.
Great. Commissioner Sparks.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just excited to share that our early childhood millage review. We met this past week, myself. And proposals, so we're excited to see, uh, what happens next month. Thank you.
Any other official reports today? Seeing none, we are on to miscellaneous. Do I have Commissioner Miscellaneous today? Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to express, uh, my appreciation for Commissioner Skaggs' invocation this morning. I found myself in the unusual position of agreeing a hundred percent with, uh, what he was saying. Uh, and I, I do think that.
Quick, turn your mic off.
Those, those are, you know, in- important words, and as we move to the, uh, the work session across the street, that I know most of us, you know, want to really seek to understand even the positions in the community that we may not share. And I think it, you know, underscores how when, you know, governance needs to limit, you know, personal freedom for the greater good, the importance of that process happening through a representative legislative process. Um, and then I would like to also pass along, uh, I, one of, one of the many communications on the topic of mask mandates this week. The gentleman, uh, actually ended with, uh, a couple of very positive things, uh, he, he likes about Kent County. The Road Commission, he, uh, in his day job, works with the Road Commission and had great things to say there. And then he also recently had a, an experience working with, uh, Network One Eighty and just expressed how meaningful it was to help some situations in his personal community. So, I just wanted to pass those words along.
Great. Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Bolter. So, I just want to make a comment. You know, the past year and a half has been incredible, uh, with the, not only just the pandemic, but the then ensuing government shutdowns of businesses and really encroachment on some freedoms. Last year, we forgave the hospitality industry the licensing fees to operate. Uh, for some, it wasn't a lot of money, but it was appreciated, and it was a s- sign of goodwill. Things for them have not gotten any better. If not, it's gotten even worse. There's not a restaurant in town that isn't finding it hard to hire people. They're expected to pay at a higher rate. They still pay their property taxes. The revenues are cut in half again. I'm gonna make a request today that at least the Executive Board Committee looks at this and staff, that for the two thousand twenty-two year, that we also, again, waive the licensing fees for these businesses that seem to be the hardest hit and are taking the biggest hit to the chin.
Thanks, Commissioner Ponstein. Commissioner Skaggs.
Thank you, Chair. Well, once again, I, I bring you greetings from District Nineteen, the District of Champions. Um, uh, this time around, and I, I failed to mention it before, we're always in a hurry. The, uh, both the girls and the boys water polo team, or both the girls and the boys lacrosse team, uh, were D-two, uh, state champions. Uh, unfortunately, my beloved girls water polo team, on which my, my daughter played, uh, did make it to the finals, but, uh, but lost by, by just a goal, but had a fantastic undefeated season up to that point. So, uh, congratulations to, to all those students.
Commissioner Polkowski.
Um, thank you, Chair. Um, as it relates to the eviction funds, um, can, can we get, like, more information on who people should call other than Commissioner Steck on how to find those funds? Because, yeah, so please, so we can get that word out, um, as, and every way possible, yeah. Cause, cause those funds actually help families first and foremost, and they help the landlords, because the landlords are the ones kind of holding the bag at a certain point right now. Um, and then second, um, just, you know, purely conflict of interest, I did send you the invitation for September fourteenth. Um, if you didn't see the billboards in town or the news, um, the world's largest, um, Special Olympics training facility is being, um, developed in Commissioner Coleman's district in Byron Township.
It is awesome.
And disability advocates will be a tenant there and a, and a full partner. So, our announcement is September fourteenth at four, so that Tuesday. And if, uh, you'd like a tour, let us know. Um, a year from now, we'll have a ceremonial ribbon cutting, because we'll all be there having fun. So, um, and impacting our community. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Polkowski. Any other Commissioner Miscellaneous today? I will just say that I toured that, uh, preliminarily, so I can't wait to see it. It is gonna be amazing. So, I'm really excited about that. Um, the miscellaneous I just have for today is just to really thank our county staff, every single one of them, um, but especially these last couple of days, Lori, Linda, Sonda, Al, Jenny, Danielle. They have had to pivot in, in amazing ways, uh, putting up a DeVos Place, uh, work session for up to even possibly more than a thousand people in two days isn't an easy task. Um, but it's because we want to accommodate our community, and we want to hear from our community, and we want them to feel welcome, and we want them to be accommodated. So, uh, these public servants did a really, really good job, and I really want to acknowledge them. And, um, Linda, I, I don't know how much, how many hours of billable hours you would have as a private attorney, but, um, I gotta think it'd be a lot. So, um, I just want to say thank you to the staff. And with that, can I get a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Skaggs?
Uh, I move to adjourn subject to the chair.
Court.
Moved by Commissioner Skaggs. Support by Commissioner Womack. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. I am Kent County. I am Kent County.
I am Kent County.
We are Kent County. We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. I'm Kent County. Somos Kent County.
Mas era Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County. Oh, yeah.